You there for the most part. So we looked at that pretty long and hard and we had people, you know, during citizens comments they, you know, there should be a cutoff time. That was the time we came up with because it gave you a little relief.
So can, so you're saying the ten to six time?
The ten to six.
And we did the same thing with the Sunday social district hours.
Well, yes.
Cut them off earlier than the other days.
We cut them off eight, yes.
Yeah. So I don't see any problem with the work that the planning commission's already done. I'm sure that they took everything into account. They've been fantastic on this marijuana stuff.
So are we, are, are, so are you just telling me to come back with a modification to the ordinance that has Sunday sales ten AM to six? Is that what I'm thinking at or?
I'm not opposed to going to nine PM. That's just my one opinion on, on Sunday. I, I understand that planning commission did one heck of a job as other cities are, are looking at what we've done as Marty has stated numerous times and, you know, if, if we miss something and we got to go back and readdress, address it, that's, you know.
Well, our ordinance says seven to nine.
Correct.
It doesn't say seven to nine, Monday through Friday, something like that.
Is there, is Metz Cafe approved till nine PM? Is this just Loom's?
Loom is the only one.
Special land use?
The only, the only special land use that actually designated the time of ten AM to six was Loom.
So Metz Cafe is going by the actual ordinance till nine?
Mm-hmm. No, they're going from, they're going from eleven to six on Sundays.
With their special land use or by their choice is what I'm asking?
By their choice. But they could technically, under their, under their special land use, they could operate, and well, the city ordinance, they can operate from seven AM to nine.
Oh, so I misunderstood.
Yep, that's, it's confusing.
So it should be uniform?
Correct.
And if we, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Um, I mean, I live very close to Loom and Metz Cafe. Um, and I'm in support of extending the hours until nine PM. I, um, as a resident, um, as a citizen, I don't think that there should be a problem with that. I think that if we want to start limiting, um, legal substitu- substitu- subsistence from being sold, then we need to look across the board at the airline and alcohol, which obviously we're not going to be doing. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could just keep the ordinance the same as seven to nine.
I misunderstood. I thought we, everybody, the six AM.
And I just, we just have to, we just have to correct it. We just have to amend the special land use for Loom to allow them to operate.
But then going forward, all the other applications would be under the nine PM, the...
The seven AM.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought everybody was ten to six.
No, Metz, Metz Cafe just started doing it on their own at six. So then I think everyone...
Then I think if we go to nine PM, then it's uniform.
Correct.
And then other applications.
Yep.
Consensus then? Sorry for the misunderstanding.
No, 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 it's confusing.
Go to nine PM and it is, right? Yes.
So I, I'm in favor of it.
Keep the ordinance away.
Yeah, keep the ordinance away. And then planning can adjust, adjust that land use if they can match going forward.
Actually, that'd be something I think that AD can handle.
Probably can do it in the ministry.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. That is done. New business, number A fireworks.
Um, the tent is our annual request for the Chamber of Commerce to pull our annual fireworks. Fireworks will be held in the same location as in 2019, which is Stony Lakeside Park. Uh, it'll be on Saturday, July tenth. It'll begin sometime after ten PM. Um, all the, all the necessary information has been provided and I'm recommending that the council approve the annual fireworks event in conjunction with Riverwalk Festival for Saturday, July tenth, twenty twenty-one.
That's my birthday, so I will be telling people those fireworks are for me.
Okay, I'll make a motion too.
For that reason, I overdo voting, you know?
I'll support Jim's motion. Any other discussion? Sue?
Do you have a question?
Yep.
Um, in, in regards to alerting the community that fireworks will be going on, I just, obviously there's been some concern on fireworks happening without people knowing so they can take proper precautions. Um, what does that look like? How, how do we alert the community to that?
So we do, our ordinance specifically allows for fireworks that evening, um, even residential. Um, we normally, it's kind of just been people know that in Riverwalk, the Saturday Riverwalk Festival is the fireworks, but I mean, we could put something in the newsletter, that's not...
Liz does.
It's, it's all over the, if you look at the Riverwalk and, and just, I think what you're referring to is the recent celebration at Impact Church for the wrestling team and it took a lot of people, especially people that lived that end, they had no idea, they thought the world was coming to an end. And that, well, it's a legitimate concern, you, you don't know what the heck's going on. That's what you're talking about, right?
Um, yeah, but I've, I've heard concern from others in the past, from last summer, um, anytime really fireworks are happening. I just think it's like a nice extra precaution to maybe even just put down the website, um, and really promote it that fireworks will be happening after ten PM. I think it's important to some people.
And Liz does, Liz markets the Riverwalks, the fireworks included in the times and then,
It's, it's in every ad?
Yeah.
That goes in any publication or, um...
Well, don't you get, doesn't, well, it's first look, you guys write about it too, correct? And I know the Ledger does stuff, so it's out there quite a bit, it's...
There's always full page ads in the Ledger and in the Myers guy, which goes to everybody. Yeah. But we...
Maybe in the newsletter.
And Liz's mailer and her email blast, they all have it.
City takes more.
Then we can all post it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fireworks generally, uh, these ones, everybody usually knows about. Usually months in advance for the Riverwalk. Okay, uh, motion in a second. Sue.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Item B Patrol Vehicle Eight Thirty-Six, Mike.
Um, in your package, um, is a request by the police department, um, to purchase, um, the replacement to patrol vehicle number eight thirty-six. The vehicle is, was a twenty-fourteen police warning interceptor and it's, for patrol purposes, has reached its end of its useful life. We are proposing going to a hybrid utility, um, vehicle, which would then also approve, um, reduce our future gas costs and time, um, to, uh, to, uh, to purchase this. Um, the, the plan is, is I would, what I would like to do is, this vehicle, we really need it as soon as possible. Eight thirty-six, as I said, is, is, we're spending a lot of money on repairs as it, as it is. Um, I normally would just budget this, um, I would normally just budget this, um, and, uh, for the next fiscal year and just deal with the next fiscal year, but we'd like to get, we'd like to get this approved now, um, and so we can start, um, ordering all the equipment that we need to, that we need to for the vehicle. Currently, we're approximately two hundred thousand dollars ahead revenue over expenditures for the current fiscal year. That doesn't include the art money that we're, that we, we're going to receive. What I'd like to, what we'd like to do if possible is purchase the cage, just amend our budget this year to purchase the cages, which is roughly about, I want to say about a ten thousand dollar expense, um, so we can buy those now and get those on order so then when the car comes, the car, we can get the car right around July first, um, and then get the car outfitted and we can pay for the car after July first into the next fi- fiscal year. So the total cost of the vehicle, uh, is fifty thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. I don't like to budget this way normally, but this is a, as I said, this is a, this is a need. We really, this vehicle's seven years old, we do need it. And, um, it would be, it would be good. Chris, do you have anything to add?
I tried to get a, uh, an idea how much we spent on gas, uh, on this vehicle. I couldn't get into the website, wanted to pass a change for account. But looking into this today, um, I went out to the cars, got the computer on it. Right now, we're averaging twelve miles per gallon on the SUV. With the new car, we'd be averaging twenty-three miles per gallon, that's city driving. So we're going to be saving, you know, fifty percent or a hundred percent on gas mileage. And also because it's a hybrid, and I, and I drive a hybrid staff car right now, when you shut these cars off, or when you stop them to park them, they shut off, they're still running, so their idle time is way down, which you're going to hopefully, it's, less where you're tearing the motor. And they, the cars do idle quite a bit, especially in the winter time. Stop and stops on him, I don't know how many people drive a hybrid, but you stop at a stop sign, the motor shuts off and restarts. So if you're sitting in a, a lot of stop and go traffic, which we do have sometimes, so overall, we're going to save a lot of money on just fuel. Scott also put in here, I told him, just because now that I'm seeing how much money we spent on repairs to get to pay for the extended warranty, um, one of the other cars, not particularly this one, we spent almost forty-five hundred dollars in repairs just in one year. And the next car, though, I think is going to be replaced. So I have the extended warranty, we take it down to Ford, it's a general deductible, we get it fixed. Okay, so, um, and we really do need this car. Eight three six is getting, it sounded like, I've driven it a few times, it sounded a little rickety, uh, motor's not running as nice as it used to, it's got ninety-two thousand miles on it. Usually we, we rotate cars out at around eighty thousand because that's when we start having the problem with nickels and dimes to death. So like Mike said, we do need, we do need this new car. It sounds like a lot of money, um, but we're actually getting a, the, the police price, I guess, for the car, the, and then, uh, there's about, between ten, eleven thousand dollars of upfitting, which is, it's going to come wired as a police car, so all the, all the harnesses will be there. We take it to, we order, we want to order the parts that'll go on the car, which are your lights, siren, and some other accessories, um, the cage and, uh, like a spotlight, um, and the light bar and all that stuff. It's all expensive, it costs money to put it in, and the upfitter, who was Great Lakes Upfitters, we've met with them a few times, um, they're doing all the Kent County cars, um, they're going to give us a five-year warranty, no questions asked warranty on all the equipment they install on the car, it'll be done locally, so if you have a problem running the Lansing or wherever to go get it fixed, they come out, they fix the car. As long as it's not something we did to abuse the equipment, they'll fix it for, under the warranty. So, um, I really urge you to think about this because we do need the car, um, so.
We're going to have to replace the car each year for the next four years.
Well, I understand. And we've been, COVID kind of gave us a little bit of a help in that department of having some extra cash and the new stimulus cash that we got. I wonder if it just wouldn't be prudent to get the car that we're going to order next year, use our newfound money and get it now.
So here is my plan with that money if treasury allows it. The plan, the plan is, I was going to talk about it in my management report, but I can talk about it now. The plan was, my, the way I see this is four hundred eleven thousand dollars, we've gotten indication from the league that it may be more than four eleven, it may be less than four eleven. So they're still, they're still working on that number for us, but what they, what they did say, um, they, they have, um, treasury has not put the rules into place as to what you can spend the money for. They, what the things they have specifically said is you can't use it to roads, you can't use it to, you can't use it to, um, um, pensions. So, but one of the things they would allow us to do, we think, very similar to what we did this year with all, with the, with the money we got from the CARES Act, we use, the majority of the money that came in through CARES Act, we went, we put that money towards police payroll reimbursement. So then that freed up money in the police department to, 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 to buy, to buy the vehicle. So what I would like to ultimately do is when that money gets here, and it's going to come in two cycles, if treasury allows it, I'd like to use that money for police payroll reimbursement, and then the money freed up will allow us to, to buy, put the second share of the money for the fire truck and all four police cars for the next four years. So we have four years to spend this money. So the, the plan is, with, the way I'm looking at this is trying to institute a plan that complies with treasury and address those needs. So, um, that's kind of how I've been thinking about how we pay for this, but from a budget standpoint, once we, once we get more direction from, from treasury, we could, I mean, we could technically, we could technically pay fifty thousand dollars right now for the patrol car, but for accounting purposes, I wanted to wait till July one, let all this, let all this play out, and then I can, I can, we can better organize how to address all those things.
But that makes me happy if we're going to make sure that Chief picks his cars.
And those guys don't ask for things that they don't need.
Right.
And Scott finds the best price and the best deal. Yeah.
This is my ideal pricing, so this is state of Michigan pricing, you're not going to make a better price than that.
Oh, and if you would, Scott would have already found that.
Oh, trust me.
And I'd like to say one more thing, if you replace all your cars at once, then you're going to be...
One other, one other motivator to do it a year at a time is the technology with hybrids, it, it's going in leaps and bounds. And as a former hybrid driver, the, the weird thing about hybrids is if you're cruising around, I had a Prius, and if I was under forty miles an hour, the electricity ran the car. So when they're going up and down the streets at twenty-five miles an hour, it's going to be on electric power. The, I think the gas mileage is going to be mind-boggling, the difference.
My, my concern is, is, is I know we're thinking we might get four hundred thousand, whatever it is, and before we go ahead and, and, and allow it all to whether it's a fire truck or police car, I'd like to see where else where we need to pay some debt.
Where we're allowed.
Allowed to spend it.
Right.
Is it DPW need something, is it, you know, something needs something else before we just go ahead? Yeah, great idea. It sounds really good. My other question is, is of the two hundred thousand that you're looking approximately, we're only going to spend about ten thousand dollars of that on buying of the cage and stuff, based on what I'm seeing here?
This year, we don't, we would spend ten thousand dollars.
Right. Yeah, I, there's two hundred dollars on the other, exactly.
Right now, yeah, right now, we're two hu- that doesn't even include the care, the, um, the money from the, the ARP money yet. When that money comes, I'm putting that, we're putting that in a separate, um, designated account so we can, so I can track that money individually, because the problem is if it goes right into the general fund, it can, you know, it gets spread out there.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm trying to be, I'm try, I, I know these, these big capital needs, we haven't had these big capital needs, um, since I've been here, um, and the, the fire trucks come about every twenty years, um, or fifteen, twenty years, the police cars, they come four years, uh, you know, you get four years where you have to buy one each year, and then you have five years off. The, the problem with, the, the difference between these vehicles and say our, our DPW vehicles, our fleet vehicles is we pay rentals into an equipment fund for every piece of equipment we use. We do not do that with these cars. So I can't use equipment fund money to buy these vehicles, so it's a little, so this is, so this, this is the same money that, you know, whatever, you know, obviously with the Act Fifty-One, but whatever I have left over, I put in the streets. So this is the same money competing with money that we got to put in the streets. So my thought process is, is if I free it up, take care of these needs, I can put more money, we can put more money to load the streets.
Here, here.
Motion to approve the purchase of a replacement patrol vehicle, eight thirty-six.
I will make that motion.
Support.
Any other questions for Chief? Sue.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Don't go anywhere, police computers is next.
Yes, um, Sergeant Vance Alkmaus will prepare another memo. All of the patrol, um, laptops, they are, they were actually refurbished from Rockford DPS, how many years ago, Chris?
Maybe five years ago, six years ago.
Before I came here.
Before I was here.
And, um, currently, they, they have Windows Seven as the operating system, but Windows Seven is no longer being up, updated, so it really needs to be upgraded, the computers need to be upgraded to Windows Ten, as our computers are, are basically obsolete. Scott's working with Kent County Sheriff, uh, Sheriff's Dispatch. The, the computers that we are proposing to buy are in align with what Kent County uses, um, and if there's any type of upgrades that need to be done, Kent County can do those for us. The, uh, total cost for the, uh, for the, for the, for the in-car computers is thirteen thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents. It would, it would put a docking station and a, and a, and a rugged patrol computer, a Dell model, uh, in, in all four of our patrol vehicles. We will use salvage funds for this. Uh, this is not general fund dollars, this is the money the police department collects from salvage inspections, and, um, they have about twenty thousand dollars, uh, currently in that fund, um, so this would be, this, this would be an, um, an applicable purpose for the salvage funds to do, so it wouldn't be general fund dollars. We would, we would, we would for accounting purposes, put it through the general fund, but we would also, we would also revenue it out, um, as a general, it, through the general fund, but this is, this is not, this is not budgeted dollars currently. So I'm recommending that, that the city council purchased the four new Dell Latitude rugged patrol computers, docking stations from the salvage ones.
That's exactly what salvage fund money is supposed to be used on.
Correct.
All right, any questions for Mike or Chief?
You had me at Windows Seven.
And Windows Ninety-eight, right? We could probably say a little about mine. Uh, motion to approve the computer.
I'll make, I'll go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
All right, Jane Ellen Award. Dan, begin.
For the twenty twenty-one construction season, we're planning to resurface Jane Ellen Street from Sibley to Downey. Funding for this work will come out of our City of Lowell street funds. The main portion of the work consists of removing the existing worn-out pavement, repairing the gravel subbase that's failed, and then pave the street back. There will be some drainage work that is necessary along with minimal curb repairs. At this time, we do not anticipate performing any underground utility work on the water distribution or sanitary sewer collection system, nor do we plan to replace any driveway approach, uh, approaches. Bid specifications were developed and project was posted on Construction, uh, Clearhouse website. The city opened bids on March twenty-fourth, and we received seven bid proposals. The bids range from two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars as a low to a high of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The engineers estimate for the project was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The two low bids are from CL Trucking of Ionia for two hundred thirty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars. The second low bid is from Youngstrom Contracting from Ionia for two hundred sixty-eight thousand and nine dollars. CL Trucking has performed satisfactory work for the City of Lowell in the past. They will also be performing work on the former street sewer project during the twenty twenty-one construction season. CL Trucking indicated their bid completion date is August twenty-eighth. While it was our intention to complete the project before the start of the school year, we do not see a big disruption to the schools by allowing this project to extend past the start of the school year. At this, at the time of our bid, we, uh, well, there's no schools located in the construction area at the time for a bid, we anticipated schools starting on August twenty-third, although we did have a schedule at that time, so. It's our recommendation that City Lowell Council approve the Jane Ellen Drive Improvement, twenty twenty-one project bid from CL Trucking, uh, all sea of Ionia for a cost of two hundred thirty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars, unauthorized, Mary signed documents.
Any questions for Dan?
This is about a hundred thousand dollars below the engineer's estimate.
And if you know that it was streets that really needed that whole Valley Vista subdivision?
Yeah.
Need some work. Right, any other questions for Dan? Motion to approve CNL Trucking's bid.
I made the motion to approve the bid from CL Trucking.
I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, Dan, don't go anywhere, we're doing the northeast pump station.
Each year, the water department has the pump stations, ground storage tank, reservoir and other structured power wash as part of routine maintenance. Two years ago, during this process, they discovered the roof shingles and gutters at the northwest pump station were needing replacement, and through the process hired risiners roofing with stolen roof, steel roof and commercial gutters. Today, we have a similar situation at our northeast pump station during the power washing last fall, discovered twenty-eight-year-old roof, shingles and gutters on the Shepherd Drive Pump Station in poor condition and need a replacement. Uh, we had budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for this type of work at current budget. Uh, for, we tried to get three competitive quotes, but unfortunately, we only received one from Riser Roofing for ten thousand, six hundred dollars, uh, along with meeting all the roofing specifications, Riser's roofing has provided quality roof repairs on the city's other buildings over the years, including Stony Lake Park and the northwest pump station. Again, this is within our budgeted amount, we recommend council approve the metal roof replacement quote provided by Riser Roofing Home Improvements, that costs not to exceed ten thousand, six hundred dollars.
That's another one, that's for the rain, let's change what we're...
Well, they've, they've done a lot of repairs.
Yeah, they've done a ton.
Really good.
Yeah. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the pumping station roof and gutter replacement.
I'll support. Any other discussion or questions for Dan? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Think you're done, Dan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wolf.
Appreciate it. Uh, Jessica, FOIA and OMA refresher.
All right. How much time do I have, Mike? How much depth do you want me to go into, do I mean?
Game starts at nine, so.
And the NCA starts at nine-twenty.
This is, um, this is sort of your semi-annual refresher on Freedom of Information Act and Open Meetings Act, which are the two laws that you as a public body have to be concerned with. So, um, I provided you with a couple of handouts. One is just FOIA basics, and we'll go over this. This is really bare bones, um, but wouldn't hurt to give it a, a read. And then this Open Meetings Act handbook, um, it's always put out every year by whoever is the Attorney General. It's not a political thing, though, and they just keep changing the name of the Attorney General, but it hasn't been changed in years, and it's a really, really good guide to the Open Meetings Act. So, um, you can often find answers to questions in here in terms of, um, you know, when you have to be meeting in public and so forth. So I'm just going to sort of talk freely about these things, um, and try to impress upon you some of the most important things to remember about both of these laws. So let's start with FOIA because it's on the top. So generally speaking, all public records have to be disclosed upon request by a FOIA quester. That's, that's the presumption, is that those documents have to be disclosed. And the definition of public records is very broad, that's something to keep in mind. So it, it constitutes a writing, prepared, owned, used, um, that you're in possession of or retained by a public body in the performance of an official function from the time created. And this includes all different forms, so emails, texts. So just keep that in mind, if you, um, if you create a document and it really has anything to do with your role or the official function of the government, then it might be a public record and it might be subject to disclosure unless there's an exemption in, in the act that says you can hold this back. And then it's just discretionary. And some of the reasons you might hold something back, um, for example, there are certain exceptions, they're, they're narrow, but one would be a law enforcement proceeding or investigation. You would not be able to disclose those documents by law, um, or any of the information contained in them until the investigation was over. Certain records that might constitute an invasion of, of personal privacy, although it's kind of a gray area. Embarrassing texts and emails don't usually cut it, and you usually have to disclose those, so be careful what you, um, email about unless you're willing to have it be out there. And just generally speaking, keep in mind that these are public records if you get a a request for them unless we find an exemption. And again, there's a very narrow list. Then those documents are going to have to be released within a pretty short time period, and it can be, you know, sort of stressful, so just keep that in mind. One thing that is privileged, again, besides the law enforcement proceedings and investigations, privilege legal opinion. So if you're corresponding with your attorney and nobody essentially discloses that information or leaks it outside of the government body, then that is privileged and that can also be kept confidential. And something just to touch upon, just so you know, remember you act as a body, so one of you individually cannot waive a privilege. So for example, if you were to be briefed on something that's a confidential matter, that is not your information personally that you can then go and share outside of this group. Again, you can only act as a body, and you can't waive that privilege or that confidentiality individually, so. Anyway, those were sort of the takeaways from, from FOIA. And then the Open Meetings Act, which comes into play a lot, I'm sure you see it in the news from time to time in various jurisdictions around here. The general rule, again, is that public bodies have to do all of their deliberations and decision-making at public bodies, that are public meetings that have been publicly noticed in accordance with the act. So that's the general rule. Now, there are some occasions when you can go into closed session, but again, those are pretty few and far between, and they usually involve privileged, privileged legal opinions, or again, police investigations and those kinds of things. But generally speaking, you're going to have to make all of your decisions at a public meeting just like that, and this, and that's the general rule. So if you do nothing else, maybe skim the first few pages of this handbook, because it's really good refresher. It also talks about notice and some other things that, obviously, your city clerk knows by heart and just does for you, so you don't have to worry much about that, but it is going on in the background, all of those notices and everything, that's all stemming from the Open Meetings Act. Sometimes there's some confusion about whether committees and other smaller groups within the city council actually constitute a public body by definition and therefore are subject to the Open Meetings Act. Generally speaking, they do. So always assume that they do, and try to make your committees and your subcommittees, you might as well notice it and make it a public meeting whenever you can. Now, there are some exceptions to that. Again, if you meet informally at a social or chance gathering, or attend a workshop and you're not making any decisions, there are a few very narrow exceptions to that, but again, generally speaking, you're required to do things in an open meeting just like this. Also, I think an important thing to remember is that if you use email, texting, or other forms of electronic communication, and you've got a quorum going back and forth deliberating and discussing issues, essentially, you're holding a closed session illegally. So try to avoid that, again, unless it's correspondence with your attorney, in which case that's privileged, as long as nobody, you know, discloses that information and the privilege is effectively waived, and they have no authority to do that. So that does happen by accident sometimes, and again, you, you have to think in terms of acting as a body, not individually, when it comes to confidentiality. So those are sort of the highlights of these two rules. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but it's just an important thing to remember. You guys are actually really good about this stuff, some places are not, so it, it's just always good to keep it at the forefront.
Yeah, it's good to have a refresher, too, because usually, this is covered pretty extensively. The league stuff we go to, but we haven't been in a league of that in a year and a half, so.
And I think it's really easy to violate the Open Meetings Act accidentally, right? Just not intentionally, but just accidentally start discussing business, you know, casually or, or in a closed, closed area or closed session. So again, just review these if you don't mind. If you have any questions, you can email me, and that's, that's confidential, obviously, so. And anything, again, that you do learn in your capacity on city council, if it is confidential or it has been deemed confidential, then it's not yours to disclose. So just keep that in mind, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Mike's really good, too, he's really knowledgeable about ONI and stuff, so.
Okay.
He's a good source of information as well.
That's why if you ever notice any email I send you is blind copy to you, because I do not reply alls, so.
Yeah, okay, now that's good, yeah, yep.
How many times have you slapped my hands?
Quite a few.
It's because I'm so close, I think. I just resent the fact that our state is, what, forty-nine in transparency, but Lansing makes sure that we can't blow our nose without letting anybody know.
I know.
You can blow your nose, we just can't all five blow noses together.
Am I wrong in my interpretation that they demand a level of transparency from us little folk that they don't apply to themselves?
One hundred percent.
I think, yeah, I think that's probably true. Um, I also know, though, that there are citizens out there who will, you know, are watching to make sure you comply, so. I've had clients who have been, you know, sued for not taking a roll call vote to go into closed session, so you just want to avoid those types of, those accidents if you can. And again, it's, it's kind of terrible read, so there you go.
Interesting, brilliant.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
I need reminding.
Don't blow your nose, we're still in the meeting. Interlocal agreement, I have for the assessor.
The Kent County Equalization Department is responding to a component of Public Act 660 of 2018, which is the property assessing reform. It requires each county to develop an agreement with local governments to assign an individual to serve as an assessor in the case of a noncompliance with an audit. We don't, we don't expect to need these services, but we're required by law to have an interlocal agreement, signed by a majority of the assessing districts in the county in case the need does arise. Kent County has identified a qualified assessing officer, Lori Spencer, to serve this role. Lori has been in assessment administration in various campuses for over forty-three years. She will be available to Kent County for a minimum of five years with no retainer fee required. In the highly unlikely event you would need this service, the municipality would be charged thirty dollars per parcel in 2021 with five percent per year increases throughout the life of the contract. I've attached the interlocal agreement, and Miss Spencer's background, I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the interlocal agreement for Lori Spencer to be designated as county-designated assessor. Just to reiterate, I did talk to Jeff Rashna about this before he went on his medical leave, and he recognized that this is a necessity, this will probably, we'll probably never ever have to deal with this, but per the law, we have to have it, so.
All right, any questions for Mike or Dana?
Make a motion that we accept this lady as our interlocal.
I'll support that.
Is that poorly worded? Did I do something wrong?
For a man's near talents, yes, it was poorly worded. All right, that's just off the record.
Any other questions for Mike or Dana, or discussion about?
Well, that's for Mike and Dana.
Yeah, okay. Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yep.
And Councilmember Sausvito.
Yes.
All right, last one.
Thank you.
Youth Fair extension, Mike.
The current agreement with Kent County Youth Fair expires on December 31st, 2021. Recently, Mayor DeBoer and I met with representatives from the Youth Fair to discuss the agreement. They are asking to extend the agreement until December 31st, 2023. After discussing this item with them, they informed me their plan is to have the 2022 Fair as the, as the last Kent County Youth Fair in the fairgrounds. They believe they'll be able to have their 2023 Fair at the new grounds, but believe they will need approximately a year to clear the site of their barns. The extension of the agreement allows them to do this. I've attached the proposed agreement for the fair. There are no changes to the terms of the agreement other than the date, the, the date of expiration. This is the same agreement that we approved in 2019. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve an extension of the current lease agreement with Kent County Youth Fair until December 31st, 2023.
I'll make that motion that we approve the extension of the current lease till 2023.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes. Oh, that's not me. I thought we were going in order. Go ahead.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sausvito.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right, Boarding Commission reports, Leah.
Um, I, my meetings are next week, so I have nothing for us to speak.
Perfect, Marty, mine will start next week. Jim.
Nothing.
Cliff.
Even if I had something, I wouldn't say anything.
Uh, City Manager's report.
Uh, yeah, a couple items. As I talked about briefly, the American Recovery Plan money, we're still getting more, we're still waiting more information from Treasury on that. As I said, it could be more than four hundred and eleven thousand, might be less, we don't really know, they're still working on all that at the federal government. I do know there'll be two, there'll be two distributions of those funds. I believe the first one will be sometime in May or June, and then the following distribution sometime in September or October for, for the funds, and we're still waiting for those guidelines. The marijuana money, I just wanted to let you know, I, I attended a webinar with Treasury a couple weeks ago, and one of the things they did disclose is that the, the amount of money per facility will most likely go down next year. They didn't know how much, they haven't been able to track it like you do with sales tax, where they can project out a year or two ahead. They're not at that point yet. I've already, kind of, I've already been very conservative with the number and the budget, what I think it is, I know my projections that I told you at last meeting. Those were only, if nothing changed, and I, at the time, I didn't know if that was the case. But one of the things they have said is that there obviously are more facilities opening statewide. The, the money for the, for the veterans hasn't been spent yet, they haven't allocated that money yet, they have to do it before 2022. Also, the price of marijuana has gone down quite a bit because of, there's more, because everything has to be grown in the state of Michigan, is tracked throughout, through the state, and now that they've been able to grow more, the prices are coming down, so all of those things do affect the money. The twenty-eight thousand dollars, we did receive, we did receive that probably about two weeks ago. I did have Sue put that money into local, into the local streets fund, so it'll help us, you know, sums it up, you know, it's a small drop in the bucket, but it is, it does help us with AMID and Jane Ellen. So that's probably what we would end up doing next year as well. Lou Gander will be here on Monday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM at the fire station. Am I right, 6:00 PM?
Yes. Yes, three o'clock fire.
Yeah, three o'clock fire, sorry.
Yep.
The budget meeting, Saturday, May 1st, 2021. I believe in order, I'd like to still allow Zoom our requirement for that, rather than doing it at light power like we've done years past, I'd rather just have it here in council chambers at 10:00 AM. Yeah, I think it'll be easier for us, because if we can do Zoom, we can do it here. I don't, I don't, I don't believe we have the capability to do it over at light power, so just do it here, and that's all I have.
All right, very good. How about appointments? We do have Jim Meyer from the Air Corps Board would like to continue serving if nobody has a problem with that. And nothing else, right, Susie?
Right.
Okay. Councilwoman Leah from ALI.
Um, I had the pleasure of meeting so many citizens earlier this week. I kind of scheduled COVID safely meeting some citizens to sign their petition to rerun, and truthfully, it was so encouraging and motivating for me with COVID, to really not been able to meet too many people in person, so this was definitely a great opportunity. That was all.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to take, take this time to thank the DPW and the police department for the fine job they're doing for the social district. They're starting to more interact with the, the community at large, and I think that's a good thing. At first, everybody was afraid of the officer sitting there, and now they're, they're so used to seeing her that now they give her some grief, and it's, it's getting to be quite enjoyable, and they're, they're taking advantage of it. There is some signage that we need to move, which we've talked about, but it's going along good, and people are really enjoying it. And it's bringing people to our downtown, and they're visiting merchants, so that's a good thing.
Cliff.
Well, Marty Beaven to that one, I, I just think that I'm really happy with the social district, it, it seems to be working, I don't think there's any problems, I hope, good. And keep doing a great job.
Jim.
I got a couple things I want to thank, maybe it's the DPW for getting out and making that clock the correct time, last couple meetings I've been there. I want to thank whoever took that in, we are going to budget for a clock next year, so they'll have to do that. I do want to, I'll find out Saturday, I want to congratulate the Lowell wrestling team, but from what I understand, they won their eighth straight state championship, I think that might get national record, is it, Barry?
I don't know, it's national.
Yeah, it's, it's right there.
State.
So eight consecutive, so hats off to them. I don't know how many one individual titles.
I think there's three or four.
Three or four, so that, that's, that's really outstanding on that part of it. And I had one more, but my senior moment effort, Bob.
I will be so happy for item number 10, Jim.
Um, make a motion to adjourn at 8:37.
Support. Motion in a second, what we have to do real quick, this is from Jim. Susie here.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sausvito.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.